Good evening. At this time, I would like to call the February 19th, 2013 meeting of the Yukon City Council to order. If you would rise for the invocation by Pastor Thomas Buckley of Judah Worship Center and remain standing for the flag salute, please.
Let's pray. Father, we just thank you that your word says we're two or three gathered. You are here in our midst, and we are honored by that. Father, I ask for blessings on the mayor and the council members in the proceedings tonight. Give you the glory and the honor and the praise in your name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please.
Alberts.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Gerba.
Here.
McCarron.
Here.
Opens.
Here.
Presentations and proclamations. This evening, we have a proclamation for the Oklahoma Emergency Management Week. If those members would meet me down front. Would you guys like to introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about your program?
Thank you, Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen, we're fastly approaching a critical time of the year. Our storm season in Oklahoma, through the efforts and guidance of the city manager and the approval of the council, Yukon is recognized as one of the very few cities in the state of Oklahoma that is successfully presenting a program to our citizens in the form of a rebate program for our storm shelters. We're one of the very few communities that have been successful in obtaining these funds from FEMA. Lori's been very active, but she has some great numbers I'd like for her to share with you real quick. And may I introduce Lori Adams, my assistant.
Thank you. We just wanted to give you guys an update and let y'all know that the city of Yukon has paid approximately $900,000 out in the storm shelter rebate, and that is about 419 shelters that are installed and ready to go for this upcoming season, storm season. Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, would you read the proclamation?
Whereas the climate of the state of Oklahoma is conducive to the development of natural and possibly man-made emergencies and disasters, and whereas, since 2007 alone, Oklahoma has received 30 presidential disaster declarations representing more than 423 million in infrastructure damage and millions more in private property damage delivered by ice and snow storms, tornadoes, flooding, and other severe weather, and whereas, the citizens of the state of Oklahoma are adversely affected by such emergencies and disasters, and whereas, it is vital that we further an awareness of the dangers of such disasters and the protective measures citizens can take in the event of such conditions, and whereas, Oklahoma emergency managers are responsible for encouraging and assisting state and local officials to plan adequately for and respond effectively to such emergencies and disasters, and whereas, Oklahoma emergency managers follow a comprehensive emergency management plan involving preparedness, response, recovery, and mitigation areas, and whereas, the Oklahoma Emergency Management Association should be commended for its continued diligence and mission to the citizens of Oklahoma. Now therefore, I, John Alberts, Mayor of Yukon, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim February 24 to March 2nd, 2013, as Oklahoma Emergency Management Week in the city of Yukon, Oklahoma, given under my hand and seal of the city of Yukon this 19th day of February 2013. John Alberts, Mayor; Douglas A. Shivers, City Clerk.
How many more shelters? I get requests for additional shelters. Do we have more money coming, more opportunity?
Our total allowance is 575 shelters. We're still, we have approximately 150 recipients still in the process where they're eligible, and we're working through that process right now.
Will there be additional monies later for additional shelters?
Naturally, that depends on the mitigation monies available. Through the grace of the council and the city manager, yes, we intend to further apply for grants in the future and to continue with this great program that we have. It's a wonderful program for the citizens. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you all very much. Thank you. The next portion of the meeting is the visitor section. At this time, it's the opportunity for someone to address the council about a non-agenda item. If there is someone here that would like to address the council about a non-agenda item, if they would come forward and address the council at this time. I know that Mr. Paul Green is here, and if you would go ahead and come forward. If there are other people that would like to address the council after Mr. Green is done, please feel free to do so.
Yes, sir. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you. Good evening, council, Mayor. Mr. Bottoms, appreciate the opportunity to be here today. I'm here really to talk about something that's exciting and will also cause a little bit of anxiety. We're actually able to move forward one of our projects out on I-40. Also, we'll include the State Highway 4 Bridge, and we'll be widening the bridge at Garth Brooks, and we'll also be redecking the bridge at Reno with this project. I've given you a packet that kind of has some information on the project, timeframes and kind of some costs and just different things, scope of the project and those types of things. Also included is a kind of a rendering of what the color scheme is for the bridges and then on Garth Brooks, we also have some form liners and things that will go on that. So, just kind of give you an idea and a feel for what that's going to look like when we're Also giving you a state map, and then included, I put in an eight-year program map that shows all the projects in this division, the nine counties that I will be responsible for. But it also has a breakout of the Oklahoma and Canadian County projects, eastern Canadian County. So, and there's some back here for anybody that wants some maps, state maps or these eight-year program maps. This is really our roadmap for what we're doing and where we're going with our highway program. So, just want to make those available to everybody. On that map of Oklahoma County and Canadian County, you'll see a project there from mile 136 to mile 140, which is basically west of Garth Brooks to just west of Morgan Road, that piece of highway that's not yet completed. So, that is actually was in our 2014 program to be constructed, and we were able to find some money and make it available to move this project forward and get it constructed earlier. So, again, it's exciting news, but it's also comes with a little bit of anxiety for people who live here, I know, because construction projects are never easy to drive through, and obviously, they're not as good as the finished product. But we have a good contractor onboard. This was led in January of this year and awarded in February by our commission. It's a $48.2 million project. The contractor bid about 400 days. That's just over 13 months to substantially complete the project, which means all the roadway on I-40, the bridges for Reno, Garth Brooks, and State Highway 4, all of those would be done within 13 months. That's a tremendous feat if they can pull that off. Also, we did offer some incentive for them to get done early, and that's at $10,000 a day. And there's a lot of user costs that go into these highways and congestion and things like that that we try to account for and try to expedite the process if we can, and it's worked out very well in the past for us. So, we look forward to starting this project. It probably, we don't have a firm date on it yet. We give the contractor what's called a flex start on these projects because they have to get all their materials and their men lined out. You know, they get awarded in February, so it takes them a little while to get their materials ordered and have them ready to go. On a project like this, the worst thing you could do is have them hit the ground and not have all their materials ready. So, but they're looking at an April start right now if they can get their materials all on site. And again, 13 months from then, we ought to have a widened section of highway, three lanes in each direction, good auxiliary lanes coming in, and a new State Highway 4 bridge. And then we'll also widen the Garth Brooks Bridge. So, we'll have, you know, not that many years ago, Parade Magazine had this section of I-40, and there's one of the 10 worst sections of interstate in the nation. So, in less than, you know, five or six years, it's going to be removed from there. I mean, in a five or six-year period. We did eight miles out west about five years ago. We started that and completed it a couple of years ago, and we just did the Morgan Road project, which is just completed. So, we're excited about getting this underway. We know it's going to be a little bit of turmoil for the people that live here, but you guys are a growing community, and it certainly will be a great benefit when we're completed.
Thank you. Welcome to the community, and we look forward to your project being completed.
I'm sure.
Thank you for the information. Does anyone have questions?
By the way, I just love this picture. You know, the end state here is going to be really, really nice, so I appreciate that. I just got to wait about a year.
And we do try to make them look a little more attractive these days and try to keep it where it's a good expenditure of our dollars, but still make it look attractive, so.
Mr. McCarron, do you have a question?
Yeah, I think there's anticipation there, obviously, of increased traffic loads as well, since we're widening that thing all the way out, and it's extending from what has now been done at the Morgan Road interchange all the way out west of Garth Brooks. Is that pretty accurate?
That's correct.
Okay. Along with the increased traffic loads on the two-lane, where do we stand on the noise abatement thing? I love these pictures. I agree with Councilman Gerba there that they really look very attractive, but on the noise abatement issues and everything for...
There are three sound walls at, and I don't know how to say the name, Sheedick Edition?
Sheedick.
Sheedick?
Yeah.
Okay. Parkland and Wood Run. We have sound walls.
Is there sound walls extending essentially along 10th Street there as well, because it's slightly removed from the highway, and also one by the community park? When I saw the initial proposals, I noticed that there was some missing sound walls there, and I was curious about that.
The only sound walls we're able to build are ones that have enough receptors. There's a certain amount that you have to, there's criteria you have to meet basically with the Federal Highway Administration to actually build a sound wall. And so, we've certainly designed this to meet all that criteria. I know there's areas where they want sound walls that, you know, there's one or two that did want them that's not going to get them. I'd be glad to look at the plans with you afterwards and kind of show you where those are right now.
Sure. Spend a few minutes and take a look at it, because that was just a concern of mine. I noticed when they did the northern part of Oklahoma City, the extension on I-235 or whatever that is that runs up towards Edmund.
Right.
There, all the way from northwest 50th all the way down to like 23rd, there's sound barriers there that they did that were very attractive and very nice.
And these will be an Ashler stone type. It's kind of a square stone, but it's going to have form liners on it, too, and it'll be painted at a two-tone color similar to the tone on the bridge. So, good-looking.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Nice. Appreciate the project, too.
Yes. Paul, it's very nice to meet you this evening. And anyway, one of my questions is, in that short a timeframe, in 13 months, that means that you're going to be working on all the bridges at the same time?
That's right.
So, we're going to have a Yukon North and a Yukon South?
Well, we will have, okay, on State Highway 4, we'll have one lane open in each direction at all times.
Okay.
And as we get the new bridge built on one side, we'll be able to actually have turn lanes also. It's not wide enough on the existing bridge to do that, but once we switch from that first phase, we will have some turn lanes on the bridges.
Is it going to go ahead, will it affect the get-off as far as the...
The ramps all remain open. They will remain open throughout the project. Now, there may be some short-term times when we're doing tie-ins or things like that. We pretty much have those tied down to where they're done at nights or weekends, you know, non-peak hours certainly, so.
And when you're finished, I assume that it'll be a lighted area just like Morgan Road is and most places?
Yes, it'll have lights on. That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
You bet.
Mr. Smith?
Yes, just one question very quickly. The difference between the 48.2 mil and the 52.2 mil is in bonus money for early completion?
Well, that's actually a bid amount, and it's kind of what comes out in the paper, so always include that. But what we do is bid time as money, and it's going to be hard to explain to you, but every day counts as $10,000. So, if somebody bid $50 million exactly, but they bid 400 days, they would have a better chance of getting the project than somebody bid $50 million. Right. And bid it at 500 days. So, it's just a bidding analysis, if you will. But I like to include that number because people have seen it, you know?
So, we're just talking about cushion, no matter who's awarded the job?
Well, it's, this project really came in a lot cheaper than what we thought it was going to be bid at. It's cheaper than our engineer's estimate. And really, that's how this project was allowed to move forward, is some of the money from projects that didn't bid as much during the year, we were able to put that together and advance this project, so.
Okay, so again, I'm going to ask just a silly question. So, we're talking about cushion in the bid of $4 million?
We, the actual amount that somebody can earn is $2.5 million of bonus on this project. Okay. And that's the $10,000 a day. Now, when they squeeze that time down, it's a 600-day project, so we'll allow them to do things outside the roadway. They may still be working outside the roadway. All lanes have to be open, all striping has to be in place, those kinds of things.
So, even after the 2.5 you're talking about, we still would have another 1.5 that if they needed some additional, let's call it detail work, that...
No, that's really not money that's left out there. That's really just for a bid analysis. It's the only thing. That's just to compare one to the other. Because one's going to get done earlier, we want them to have an opportunity to get the job if they're bidding a quicker timeframe.
Very good. Thank you.
Which company was awarded the bid?
It's Do-It and TTK Construction.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Paul.
We appreciate your time.
You bet. Thank you.
Any other visitors this evening? Any other visitors? See none at this time. We'll recess as Yukon City Council reconvene as Yukon Municipal Authority. The first item is Item 1A. That's the YMA Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the Yukon Municipal Authority by unanimous consent can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all council members, all authority members, excuse me, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion to approve A, the minutes of the regular meeting of February the 5th, 2013. Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Opens?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Yes.
Next item, that's 2A, and that's consider approving the expenditures of funds in the amount of $1,700, I'm sorry, $1,74,782.72 for the purchase of vehicles and equipment from the 2012 master lease purchase agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please.
McCarron?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Opens?
Yes.
Gerba?
Yes.
At this time, we'll adjourn as YMA and reconvene as the Yukon City Council. Item 1 is the Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the Yukon City Council by unanimous consent can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all council members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion that will approve A, the minutes of the regular meeting of February the 5th, 2013; B, the payment of material claims in the amount of $336,724.11; C, the submission of a grant application for the 2013 Healthy Communities Incentive Grant available from the Oklahoma Tobacco Settlement Endowment Fund; D, the submission of a grant application for 2013 Keep America Beautiful Coca-Cola Bin Grant; E, the submission of a grant application for the 2013 ACOG Clean Air Grant for Public Sector Fleets; F, the designating the items on the attached list from the Technology Department as surplus in authorizing their sale and donation or trade; G, accepting the Oklahoma Department of Environmental Quality Permit number SL-00009120512 for the construction of approximately 490 linear...
Linear.
Linear feet of 8-inch sewer line and a...
Appertnances.
Well said. Appertnances to serve the city of Yukon year 2010/11 CDBG Sewer Replacement Project, Canadian County, Oklahoma. H, accepting Oklahoma Department of Environmental Qualities Permit WL-00009120511 of the construction of approximately 312 linear feet of 6-inch waterline and appertnances to serve the city of Yukon CDBG year 2, I'm sorry, 10 and 11 Set Aside Waterline Replacement Project, Canadian County, Oklahoma. And I, setting the date for the next regular council meeting for March 5th, 2013, 7:00 PM, in the council chamber Centennial Building, 12 South 5th, Yukon, Oklahoma. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Gerba?
Yes.
Opens?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes. Item 2 would be the reports of boards, commissions, and city officials.
None received, Mayor.
Next item is 3, then, that would be consider approving the expenditure of funds in the amount of $1,74,782.72 for the purchase of vehicles and equipment from the 2012 Master Lease Purchase Agreement. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Gerba?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Opens?
Yes.
Next item is 4, and that's the city manager's report for information purposes only. Mr. Bottoms?
Yes, we'd like to talk about the sales tax report, which would be for the December sales tax collections, and really and truly, Mayor, this is a disappointing report for me personally. Our sales tax were up over the same period last year by 2.97 percent. In most cases, anybody receiving a 3% increase in sales tax would be very, very happy, but I really had anticipated and hoped for a bigger increase, considering as I drove around through the Christmas holidays and entered the stores and saw the amount of activity in every store I was in for the whole time, I'd really hoped that they would be better than that. However, we still, for our year-to-date numbers, are at a 6.31% increase for the year. Very, very good news, considering what our budget projections were, and particularly since we're entering this month, the budgeting process, which I'm sure that staff is anxiously awaiting and anticipating with a great deal of enthusiasm, I would hope. That being said, I'd like to, you know, our Parks and Recreation Department, as you are very well aware, has something going on all the time. If you, if you, they work all day, every day to make sure that the citizens of this community and those that wish to come in and participate with us have something to do all the time. Jan, you and your staff are to be congratulated for a great program of work for your department. What I'd like to talk to you about is the Kids Trout Fish Out on Saturday, March 2nd, at the Robertson Activity Center Pond. 800 rainbow trout will be stocked in the pond. Fishing starts at 10:00 in the morning, goes to 1:00 in the afternoon, assuming there are still fish in the pond by that time. So, adults must accompany the child. Fishing license is required for everybody over 16 years old, and prizes will be awarded. Also, one of my favorite events, the Taste of Yukon, will occur on Thursday, March 28th, at the Robertson Activity Center from 5:30 to 7:30. If you want to park within any kind of reasonable distance of the center, you need to get there early. It starts at 5:30, but I suggest you get there a little early, just so that you can find some kind of parking within the area. There'll be over 20 food booths. Tickets are $10 in advance, $12 at the door. Come and enjoy two more great events sponsored by our great Parks and Recreation Department. With that, Mayor, I'm done.
Thank you, sir, for the excellent report. It's good news about the sales tax. Next item is 5. That's a new business. No new business? No new business? Mr. Opens, council discussion.
Yes, sir. Don't you love this city? I'm really excited about our city and about our growth and about the things that are going on in our city, but I'm more proud of our city employees because y'all are the ones that make it happen. You are the ones that make it happen, just like the program Frosty and Lori tonight. That was wonderful. What a program for Yukon, and y'all made it happen. A lot of other communities didn't make it happen. Y'all made it happen, and so every department that's in our city, I don't care if it's Parks and Recreation, sanitation, whatever department, I am very proud of the employees that make things happen right here in our city. Mayor?
Mr. Smith?
Nothing to me, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Gerba?
I'm just going to second on the Taste of Yukon. I've been there for last, probably about five years every year, and if you've never been out there, come on out, see what some of the vendors here and some of the restaurants have to offer. You will not leave hungry, and you'll be in a pretty good mood, so come on out.
Mr. McCarron?
Oh, why not?
I mean, you're skipping it?
No. I do have a couple of things. I am going to put Mr. Opens in for Cheerleader of the Year award. He's always exciting about our town, as I am as well. I think Yukon is a really, really great place to visit. I also want to send out a kudo to our grant lady. Obviously, looking at the agenda tonight, she has been very busy and certainly done a lot of good work in behest of our city. Unlike the mayor and our city manager, my sympathy actually goes out to the staff since budgeting comes up next month. I also was very pleased tonight to see with the vehicle purchase thing that we are retiring some of our old vehicles that are leaving oil and residue all over the city here and there and cleaning up something that's needed a lot of attention for quite a while. Very pleased to look at a majority of the work that was done there. I also was very pleased to see the data and the information that we received ahead of time so that we could do a reasonable analysis of that. My hand goes out to the folks that put that together, and we do appreciate that very much. And I'm looking forward to, of course, you know, in the future, having that kind of information available to us. I do appreciate that because I know it takes an awful lot of work to do it. And beyond that, I think that's it, Mayor.
Mayor, I would, preparing that document does require a lot of work from a lot of people. It was a culmination of about six months, and I'm very proud of the work that was done to do that. I'll also tell you that on the retired, particularly the retired black and white police vehicles, I have only issued one instruction, and that is that I want them gone by dark.
That is that they'll start, right?
If they'll start. And tow them off. I don't, just gone by dark.
Well, I think that, I agree with Rick and Mike about our community, and we have this great opportunity that starts out at the hospital and the future of Yukon, and we've got this idea of branding, and we have our new pins with the Y, our water towers are being repainted. We have an image, and we're trying to project this positive, clean, great place to live, great place to shop, and it's an image. But with that image goes an attitude, and I think that the attitude of this community has improved immensely, and I think that starts with the city manager, the associate city managers, the department heads, and on down. I've told you before, I go every morning, if you want to find me about 8:00, I'm getting coffee at Holly and Vandement, and I see a lot of our employees there, and more and more of them talk to me than ever before. But they have a really good attitude, and I talk to them. They've complimented Mr. Deckard and what a great, great boss he is, but other people. I mean, the police officers, it's just a better attitude in the community. And what I want to say, like with Rick, thank you all that are in the leadership, but also the workers. I mean, every person, it's a great attitude, and we are projecting an image, and you all are responsible for the image that we're projecting, and thank you for making it easy for all the people that sit up here. We get a lot of credit, but we, I, and I know the other guy... And thank you for making it easy for all the people that sit up here. We get a lot of credit, but we, I, and I know the other guys do too. We are getting a lot of compliments about the way the city looks, the vehicles. I mean, you know, I'm working on my 30-year reunion. Jeff, there's vehicles that they're driving around in this city, or they were. Apparently, by tonight, they'll be gone, but they were driving them, John Corn, he's standing back there, too. I mean, when we went to high school here, we graduated in '83 and '84. So, I mean, it's a great, refreshing, there's a little bit of grumbling. I heard some grumbling about our black posts that go on the street signs. I love them. I think it's great. It's a great image for a great community. Thank you all for making it a great place to live and making it easy for us. Thank you. So, attitude starts with the city, and you guys have a great attitude. Thank you for sharing that with the workers and presenting it back to the community. So, with nothing else before the council, we stand adjourned.